Yeah, I think we're gonna do that today.
It touches me.
Uh, it's. Hopefully, we're gonna do that.
Oh. So.
I'm gonna be over at the place.
I understand there is a long way to go.
I'm gonna go.
Yes.
Uh, so as of right now, I was.
Oh, and then you should.
It's intended to go through, but like obviously we're.
Cause you're looking at training.
And like what's our plans also.
You know, the means to it sways.
We don't superpower it goes, it just has to go.
Yeah, probably to a sunny street.
Um, so as of right now, they're on a standstill. We should be more careful.
Right, I just don't like.
Uh, when it comes back, they'll receive another letter with a company as to what they're hoping to do and hold up.
Yeah. So, I feel like the road is running stuck.
Like it's the stub road on Stony Court needs to go down south.
No, go back to your.
With the.
Yeah, uh huh, that's just something that he has to work out with. He just. That's the issue, yeah, that's the issue is originally they agreed to do half and half the road, so either the. But now it's a new property owner, so.
Right after the other side. I ran through the guys.
Yeah.
Which one then?
No, this is your money, I just had one.
Also, oh, yeah, he's a layer, he's a.
They noticed if it's existing home in a lot, unless they'll.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, and I think the rest for a few.
Well, that's.
He must have watched us.
Yeah. We had. Yeah. A brown, that's a little.
He's on her mag, like, and he just walks in the brown.
He brought some papers. No problem.
You didn't go away. How are you?
So good.
I'm sure you're back. Yes. Which all of those people were here for that, so that's, that's.
That's why.
You're not.
Who said that I didn't. Someday that was coming up.
You're welcome. I was.
Saying it forever, now they got me, can't give you training, I'm not providing. We're gonna talk.
If you.
No, Artie, Artie said to the mayor, he heard, he said, hey, our training says don't do that. We're gonna get sued, the guy said, I didn't. You're protecting us, and that's what I told him. I just didn't like, I didn't like how about council, now we don't really want to. We do, we just wanted.
What's the.
A lot.
What happened to our public rights, I mean, elect.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm not excited to be like, hey, it's not today, it's going to kind of.
Okay.
I gave them all a quick, a quick update, like, well, I gave them all his email, but.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll get more of them done since when it comes back to all, but.
Okay.
Oh. He was here for me. He was there. Guys, I wish I had. I don't know, it's probably. It's all. I don't know, I just had that. Over, overfly fast, it's gonna. Spider, honey. Pirate. Peter. We have. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, no, I thought it was.
It is not.
I'm sure it's not. I never got.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Let's see. Call the order. Audrey, you wanna give us an invocation and, uh, is Tyler not here? Mino, you wanna give us the, uh, pledge of allegiance?
Dear gracious father in heaven, we're thankful to be gathered tonight on this blustery day, grateful that we get, um, this opportunity to meet as community members and, uh, go through some of these issues. We pray for inspiration, pray to keep in mind and those, the needs of the community as well as our responsibilities to fulfill the law and we pray for good camaraderie and ability to, uh, work together and coming up with good solutions and we give thanks in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the father of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, open up for any unscheduled public appearances. Anybody wanted to? Do you wanna address any? All right, we'll close that. All right, uh, first item on the, um, consent items to prove the minutes of the planning on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one.
I approve to move the minutes of July twenty seven, twenty one.
I second that. Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Maddox subdivision, that's been moved. They're gonna go talk to their neighbor. Good. All right, wives, let's see. All right, discussion on shipping containers.
Okay, thank you, uh, um. All right, so this is, I mean, we've discussed shipping containers in the past. I've received emails from y'all and we had the discussion at the planning commission meeting, I think in March, I believe. Um, just quick definition of a shipping container or the definition that Rob has given me in the past is a reusable container designed for intermodal freight transportation. Um, these are just a few pictures. I asked a few of my coworkers and asked, uh, Brent Wallace, he's our new code compliance officer, um, to take a few pictures of shipping containers that he saw around. Um, and here's another slide of a few others. One of these pictures is from, um, a complaint that Aaron received a few months ago. And so just in the background, from the emails that I received from y'all, I kinda compiled and combined a few of the concerns and kinda tried to put it into a few main topics. Um, one of them was defining long term versus short term. The suggestion was sixty days and so kind of the idea was if it's intended to be on the property for longer than sixty days, it should be subject to said regulations. If it's less than sixty days, great, move it, we'll be fine. Um, and then the question of if a permit would be required or when a building permit would be required for it. Um, just for an example, if they were to ever put plumbing in it or electrical, they would obviously need to get a building permit. Um, if it should be limited by lot size, uh, one of the ideas was just kinda like accessory structures where based on the lot size, only a certain percentage of the lot can be covered by a shipping container. Um, that's the idea in accessory structure, it's no more, well, the standard is no more than five percent of the gross lot area can be covered by accessory structures. And then if it's over two acres, it's increased to seven percent. Um, and for R one twenty and R one thirty, it's also seven percent. Just because they're smaller lots, you're obviously gonna get smaller accessory structures. Um.
Is the intention to put a table, uh, in where you describe based on the size of the lot, the size of the container as well? In once the code gets approved? Like, in essence, were you describing?
That's something that we're gonna.
Okay.
Talk about, just kinda compare y'all's concerns of shipping containers versus what's already existing in the code for accessory structures and see if there are specific things that y'all would like to add or recommend we add or specify for shipping containers outside of the already accessory structures.
It would just be a math thing, right, like we do with accessory buildings? So if it's.
Yes, yes, and so the idea is kinda, y'all can either say, oh, a new percentage for shipping containers or include the square footage for shipping containers in that of accessory structures where it's included in the five percent if it's on the lot for long term. Um, but that's something that we can discuss in a moment. Um, setbacks, the idea was just not wanting it to be visible from the street and also making sure it's not on any easements of any sort. Um, one suggestion was for design, if it were consistent with the color of the house. Another thing that was mentioned in the emails was possibly no vertical stacking. Um, and then pointing out that it can be used for a business or a home occupation in this circumstance. So this, this is something that Rob pointed out to me is that, cause when I was kinda going through y'all's concerns, he was like, that looks a lot like our accessory structures, like, um, ordinance. And so I kinda went through, this is just, this is what's in the code. Um, for accessory structures, they require a building permit if the accessory structure is larger than two hundred square feet or if it's attached to a permanent foundation. Um, and then for the size, like I said, it cannot cover over five percent of that gross lot area or seven if it's greater than two acres, this is specific for R one forty. Um, it does have a max height of twenty five. And then for setbacks, it's the thirty foot front setback and then ten feet from the rear, ten feet from the side and then sides adjacent to a street, it's twenty feet from the property line. Um, and then there's a setback of six feet from the main dwelling and that's measured from roof overhang. And then materials, the only thing that's, um, written in the code is that, uh, basically if it's, if the lot is less than half of an acre, then the materials should be consistent with the materials of the home or the color of the home, otherwise it's not regulated. Um, and then no home occupations are permitted in accessory structures.
The biggest difference between the accessory structure and this is that these can be temporary and when they're temporary, they usually are in the front yard.
That's, yeah, exactly.
The complaints we're getting is they're being stacked in the easement and they're being pushed into the front yards, right?
Yeah, or, or they're next to trails where they don't, if they don't have a fence, there's, I'll show you that. Where is it? This one picture in the bottom right, real quick. I my mouse by, like, that's in the backyard, but it's next to a trail, they don't have a fence that's blocking it. That's just another thing, I'm like, it does look like it would be on the ten foot public utility easement, I'm sure it is, but.
They probably drove up the trail to put it there, too.
That's pretty likely. Okay, so just, this is that same chart that's in the staff report, just kinda comparing those points. Um, the main thing, just like Jerry pointed out, is the difference is the whole long term versus short term and that shipping containers are mostly intended to be short term, but if they are long term, this is how we should regulate them. Um, another thing I do want to note is that, not like accessory structures are not allowed to be used as accessory dwelling units, like mother-in-law apartments are not permitted, therefore that would apply to shipping containers too. If people were ever trying to use that as an accessory dwelling, it would be prohibited.
Quick question on that, on the last one, it says cannot be used for business. How's, can you, I guess I was not aware of that and the code, accessory dwellings are not allowed to be used for business?
Accessory structures are not allowed to be used as home occupations and so.
People have secondary garages and their, their business is construction and they keep all their stuff there, they can't do that?
It's supposed to be kept, it's basically out of sight, out of mind. And so home occupations have certain criteria where it can't exceed twenty five percent of the home square footage and it needs to be within the home. And then like the primary entrance for the home occupation needs to be the same primary entrance as the main dwelling. Um, it can't have any increase in traffic, uh, that was originally intended with the zoning. Um, and there's a few other things, basically it's supposed to be like people do not know that there is a home occupation there or someone's working out of their home is the intent. Yeah, and if there are customers that are coming to the home, they're actually required to send out notices to the people within, I think it's a, is it three hundred and fifty feet for that one? I'd have to look back at it, but notices are sent to people directly adjacent. If we get complaints, we work with them, that's, that's Candace that typically does that, she works with our business licensing, but.
So basically if you run a lawn care company or something like that and you keep some of your equipment in your building and you've got employees coming to meet, pick up your equipment and leave, that's not legal?
You're supposed to get a home occupation license, if they have any, if they have any like cars or trucks or trailers that are used for the occupation license, they're not allowed to have any logos or anything implying that it's for it unless it's hidden. So if they have it inside a garage, that's fine, if it's behind, back behind a fence, that's fine, it just can't be inside of the public street.
I was not aware, that's sort of infringing on people's ability to take care of themselves. So I was just kind of, that took me by surprise, I'm surprised I didn't notice that when I was reading. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, Kelly, I don't know if it's semantic or not, in this table you do have, you call out, um, as far as, uh, the container should not be visible from the street, but then I don't see listing the bullets above. So I don't know.
Like comparing to accessory structures?
No, you're calling out here in this table summary, I'm guessing it is.
Uh huh.
It is, is that what it is, is that summary table?
Uh huh.
Okay, so then up above, I don't see a call, identify that, uh, the container cannot be visible from, from the street, that's what I'm saying. In either A, B, C, D, E, or F bullets, I don't know if there's something.
Oh, you mean, are you referring to what's in the existing code?
No, no, what, what's in actual, our proposal. Right, so you have identified a couple bullets within our proposal and none of the bullets call out that, you know, we do not like to see that shipping container visible.
Is it in the report that I just didn't pick up?
It's in the table and that's what I'm asking, I don't know if it's only semantic or what, but it's, it's, yeah, it's in this table that you were describing, which I guess it's a summary table, but then when I, when I, it's in the summary table, but it's, it's not a bullet within the report.
Okay.
Again, I don't know if it's only semantic or.
I'm like, this is just a summary, I'm like, if y'all feel it's important.
Okay.
Like, and you want me to put it in the text amendment to propose to y'all later, I can for sure do.
Wrapping it all up.
Yes, yeah, that's my intent with this, is just be like, this is all the stuff that you've told me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if you wanna add more, let me know, if you wanna take out anything, let me know. Um, just, yeah, that's kinda the idea of this discussion.
So, they, they sell containers that have offices, home offices, already built in them, you can like buy them.
Oh, really?
They also sell them where they're a dwelling unit.
Nice.
And you can put it like an eighty.
Like a tiny home.
Back. And so I think what Audrey's saying is, it should be okay if they give the office module, put back there, if they're doing a home office, right? That's not really running a business.
There's a difference between, at least to my understanding, running a home occupation, like needing a home occupation license versus someone working from home because of COVID, like the, those are two very different things.
A lot of businesses are just staying that way, so people are getting their separation from their kids.
Right, like working from home is different from running a business from their home. Like, if people are running a salon or if people are selling merchandise and sending out packages from their home, that's kinda where we call out and are like, hey, you need a home occupation license so we can mitigate any of the impacts that you could have on adjacent residents, is the idea.
So, the other question that I had was, um, in the accessory building code, we define some structure, some rule around, um, accessory dwelling matching the aesthetics of that main house if the lot size is half acre or less. So that we wanna apply the same concept of for the container, because otherwise we say, if you, A, we're saying containers are not allowed for, what was it, point twenty five? So therefore now at least only for half acre lots, I can have a container, but if I have a container, if I have a half acre, I have to match it to my house, if I have a bigger lot, you can just leave the container as it is. So, my recommendation would be just to, to be fair across all the lot size.
Be consistent.
Yeah, if we, if we go and do accessory building, but I'm guessing that point will have to change accessory building code, I'm guessing, right? And it's not, um, and it's not something that will have to implement within this, um, yeah, container code regulation we're trying to put together.
And I think it would have something to do with its long term versus short term stay, sixty days. They don't have to paint it all up if it's sixty days, you know, if they're keeping.
Yeah, and definitely I'm okay, but personally I would like to, you know, personally, again, I would, I would like to see, um, container matching the aesthetics of the main unit, also if you live in a lot that is greater than half acre or removing, uh, the after acre limitation from the code, either way, just to make it fair.
I think with the bigger lots, it's not impossible because the container can be set farther back. I think the smaller the lot gets, the more it needs to look like the house, cause everybody's closer. But as the lot gets bigger, it doesn't really, it kinda sets towards the back. But like if you're on a two acre lot.
Sure.
It's gonna be in the back of the lot probably where you don't even see. Maybe it's something to where if it's visible from the street, it should, it should match a color or something. And most of these are like gray and brown anyways.
Some are, some are red and blue.
Yeah, but they can all be visible from the street regardless, we say, right?
If that, if that's what you say, I'm like, that, that is what was in y'all's emails, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Is that, the preference was that it wasn't visible and so I guess that's something else that y'all would have to address is, are you okay with as accessory structures just having a thirty foot front setback? Or do you wanna make it so it's setback and not visible from the street, like behind a fence?
So my.
Something that affects.
Yeah.
You're telling me I have to go buy and purchase a stall fence? For a short term, maybe.
I think.
I think something just to consider.
Thirty feet is essentially.
How far back, how far back is the unit? If it's so far back, it doesn't need to be painted or hidden or whatever, but if it's within thirty or forty feet, then it should, it should start to match the house, maybe it's a distance from home. You said a lot size on matching, it should be how far back did you put it? Then they're encouraged to push it farther back, to get it out of the public view and setback away. You know what I'm saying?
So thirty feet's basically the front of your house, right? Typical, so you could, if you wanted to do something like that, you could say it has to be behind the home? Cause you're never, I mean, if you say, if you say no view from the street, you're never gonna meet that, really technically, right?
Yeah, it's impossible.
Because you're, you can't build a fence.
Like on a corner lot or something.
That tall, right? So, uh, if that, if the goal is to get it as far back as possible, you wanna say something like behind the home.
Or, or would you just say fifty feet front setback? Cause that makes it twenty behind the front of the house, right?
No, there are some lots that have their homes eighty feet back from the property line, I'm like.
When some close.
Maybe we say it's, it's ten feet pe- behind the front, the furthest front part of the house.
Beside the front of the house or the front wall?
Yeah, that it's, maybe we say it's fifteen or ten feet minimum. Like if it's, if it's ten or fifteen, you need to paint it the color of the house, if it's forty or fifty, it could just be the container. I'm doing that example versus size.
That's interesting, that's gonna be dependent on.
Couple of, uh, thoughts, one, determining the, the timing, um, depending on how the commission wants to go with it, you could just have it be where access, uh, storage containers are essentially accessory units, except with certain limitations. Essentially, we say, we specifically call them out as, this also counts as an accessory structure, so you have to follow all those same rules, plus special rules for them. It could be, you know, you want it set further back, or maybe it's, these rules don't apply if you only keep it on your property for sixty days or less, or thirty days or less, or we say, we don't care, as long as we know it's there, then we're gone. And then I wanted to, regarding home occupations, home occupations are essentially businesses and businesses, as it's kinda defined, do not include people working for someone else. So if someone has an office out in their yard, that's not a home occupation. If they're just, you know, you're doing your internet business, you're working for your company from home, we don't particularly care. And a lot of the time, we won't ever notice if someone has an office because we're not going into people's garages and seeing what you're doing in there. Um, it really all becomes an issue where there's been a certain, a few homes we've gone complaints on where it's clear they're storing a lot of materials and then, you know, having people come in and use it as like a, a cooler or freezer or something like, okay, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid with the accessory structures and storage containers would be part of that.
So my two cents worth on the topic is I would, Rob, you're in, summarize what I was thinking, I'd prefer to not reinvent the wheel. I'd prefer to match whatever the accessory structure stuff says, but then with whatever, you know, conditions that are specific. One thing that is a little peculiar is shipping containers, if you, you can stack two of them and you're not gonna get twenty five feet. So it probably would make sense to have that be one of those stipulations, we don't want them to be stacked. Um, and I like the idea of just saying, if it's less than a certain time period, then we're not really gonna regulate anything or care about it. Um, and personally, I don't care too much about matching the color, but I do like the idea of just matching whatever the accessory structure current regs are.
So the only, the only issue with that is, most homes don't have stills made of steel like a, so when you say match the building, they're gonna, you know, they're not gonna wanna go put siding on it or stucco it. So there needs to be a, maybe a little.
Color.
I mean, you spray the color, it could blend the house, you know, that part can match, but maybe with.
Like call out color rather than material, I guess.
Call out color rather than material because they're not gonna go stucco one of those things.
Right.
But because of that, because of that, their setback should be farther.
Just gonna say, you'd be surprised, I wrote a letter recently regarding the need for someone to put an exterior cladding on any storage containers that would match their house, let's say.
But I think that would fall under an HOA type regulation, not a city regulation. Like, there are HOAs, you're right, well, first of all, they'd say no container, period. Uh, but the fact that we're trying to work with it. So, just to summarize, maybe we say, if you're using the storage containers, the same regulations, but if it's within, you know, fifteen or.
Ten or fifteen.
Yeah, within the house, it's gotta be painted, you know, the color. Um, and you're right, can't stack yet, we don't want them stacked even though it meets the minimum height requirement. I could see four of those easily. Stack, cause they, they base the square footage on the footprint.
So here's my other question, how does that, how does this relate to pods that are staying? Like I know a house on Highland on the way to Costco, they've had a pod sitting on their circular drive for probably a year and they're not in any HOA or anything, I'm just wondering how this, you know, relates to pods.
The storage pods?
The storage pods like you use if you're moving, yeah.
Yeah, aren't those limited though to a certain period of time?
It's been there for a year with caution tape around it, so I was just wondering.
According to the regulations, it's thirty to sixty days, I guess they can kind of move it, start this clock like you do on parks.
Yeah.
So those can stay in the front, cause those are for moving and for storage, they're temporary, but what is the regulation for a pod versus a shipping container, they're different? They have different function.
Well, could they have?
I know, but they're necessary.
If you go back to those pictures, I can, I can make the same argument, some of those.
Based on the definition, I feel like it would be pretty easy to say that they're the similar thing or.
We could also tweak that definition, cause that's specific to a, you know, a freight car shipping container or a cargo ship, shipping container, not a pod.
Right.
How it's more like a, a trailer or a semi truck, you know?
And it stays usually for a couple weeks while you're loading up and between things and, and you can't necessarily use it if it's in your backyard, you can't get, you know, not every house is set up to be able to get it back there. So they use these small pods. What's your thoughts?
It is an intermodal freight transportation, even if it's a pod.
It's the same definition.
A pod is just a container.
That's true.
So, I'm just, yeah, I was just saying, we need to address this as well.
We could look at it to clarify.
Cause it's a very, it's now totally integrated into living, like it's its own business, it's used all the time.
Always.
You know, like it's a moving apparatus, you use it when you're packing up and you're switching, so.
It's usually within that thirty to sixty days.
Right.
Right, and so.
So is your purpose, you want to make sure that it's included in the shipping container?
I'm wondering what we want to do with it because some of them sit on like a condo driveway. They don't have any way to get it to back, do you know what I'm saying? There's no way to have a setback, we just need to talk about what we want to do with it.
But it would be under this.
The sixty days.
The minimum, will be under the minimum sidewalk too.
Right, and so it can stay out front on the drive?
Right.
Thirty to sixty days.
Okay.
Sixty days, yeah.
All right, just making sure.
Yeah, it's just a smaller container.
Okay, good, I just wanna make sure.
And then you do have in the E, that's no vertical stacking, does only apply for non-accessory container? When you, is that what you were thinking? Because I know, I know Chris mentioned about the no vertical stacking.
Samina, my interpretation, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you, there's a time limit on these. And then everything that is in the accessory code applies to them. But because of their characteristics, there's some specific things that apply to these shipping containers, one would be.
Above and beyond.
You can't, yeah, in addition to you can't stack them, and whatever other stuff we have.
So you're recommending then to modify the accessory building, including verbiage around shipping container used for accessory building?
Specifically for just.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so if somebody says, like let's say they call Kelly and say, I'd like to put a container, can I do it? The section that you would refer them to would be accessory dwellings. And that really is, oh, everything's structures, and oops, you know, big fella there. And then there would be some specific things about the no stacking and.
Yeah.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, yeah.
Yeah. I have a sort of silly question, and that is, do we need to regulate this at all? I guess from the pictures, the answer is yes, based on what we see.
Well, I think that's the purpose of these conversations and I've been, and we've been working to make coworkers aware and the, the reason why it was brought to me by Erin is because she was getting calls from people being like, because no one could send informal complaints because we didn't have anything in our code addressing it, and so the response back to them was, well, currently we don't regulate anything about it, so that's that, you know?
So I've got a question related to that top left-hand corner picture. It looks like you got two, an RV, a business trailer, and then the one to the right almost looks like a refrigeration truck.
You know, Brett showed me this one, he referred to these two as legal trailers because they had wheels on them. He was actually pointing out this one just because it doesn't have wheels and he was actually, he went to that property because he was told that someone was living in it, so that's.
So, so that stimulated the thought on my behalf, what, and I, I don't want to digress too much down a rabbit hole, what's this setup with say a shipping container on a big semi-truck bed? Or like that refrigeration unit, if someone.
Like if the shipping container was sitting on a trailer with wheels?
It had wheels.
Would we consider it as same?
And then, and then you parked out your driveway.
And it's, and it's different regulation.
Yeah, different regulation, so you're, you're talking, you know, it's pulled by a semi-truck, right?
Yes.
Yeah, different regulation, so, I remember I wasn't allowed, right? We were dealing with one. That's a different regulation and wouldn't, and this wouldn't be applicable, these regulations you're talking about, about wouldn't be applicable.
Yeah, understand it's a different regulation and I, I just, what's the thirty-second answer, not allowed or?
Classified as a commercial trailer and if I remember right, oh, it's slept since then, it's the other day. No, municipal code.
One commercial vehicle.
One commercial vehicle and it's rated about five-eight. If I look it up, if you give me a minute, I can look it up.
I think you can look for it.
So, so I'm just gonna summarize, you guys just tell me for, if it's thirty to sixty days, we're not gonna regulate it. Like basically, it's temporary, if it's, if it's under sixty days, if somebody comes to you, you just say, has it been there longer than sixty days? If it's gonna be there longer than sixty days, then it goes by the, the code.
Accessory structure, yeah.
With a couple extra items, which might be setback, it needs to be in the backyard. And then, are we gonna have? Not stackable.
Do we have a regulation, even, do we have a regulation in the thirty to sixty days that they cannot be on a utility's men? Because that does cause issues.
I would say anytime nothing should be stored on top of the utility, period. I mean, that's probably already the code.
I think if we, he, I was just saying, I think that should probably be included because people.
But isn't that already the code, you're not supposed to stack anything on.
Well, let's.
If you wanted to move it.
Sorry. Is, save, for things that aren't classified as accessory structures, like if people have a shed that's less than two hundred square feet, we basically tell them, you know what, there's no defined setback, we consider it, and the building code consider it, considers it a temporary structure. And so it would be the resident's responsibility to move that structure if the utility company ever came in and needed access to it.
Or they would just move it.
Or, yes, or destroy it, whatever it is.
So is, is it one of the restrictions also that it's gonna be there that long and needs to be painted?
That's what I was gonna ask you guys, if, if we make the requirement that it be behind the house, like instead of saying ten or fifty, whatever, just say it has to be behind the house? Do we care if it's painted, like, just say it has to be behind the house? Now, if we bring it, if we say we're gonna put it ten feet past the front of the house, then we should say it should also be painted. But to keep it simple, I would just say. It's gotta be in the backyard, like, it's gotta be behind the structure and then.
So behind the back edge of the home, not behind the front setback, behind the home?
Behind the, behind the home.
I think it's fair to ask people to match the color or at least have it looks sort of less ugly.
Yeah, because you're right, some of them get kind of colorful, if you buy a used one, they're, they can be yellow, they can be.
Yeah, green, red.
All right, then they need to at least match the paint color of the house.
Just like the development, or just as the code was saying.
Include it in the accessory structures percentage?
Because, yeah, include it in the accessory structures.
So then they're limited that how many they can have?
So if it's far enough back, it doesn't have to be painted, if it's close to the house and the residence, it's gonna match in at least color.
And then, and then it is included in the square footage, total square footage of there.
Right.
But then that would apply only for a half acre less, what you described. Are you okay with that? So, okay, so it have to max the, because it costs not just the color, but also the exterior material, so if I have.
Oh, for the materials. So, okay, sorry, this is me just trying to clarify, make sure I have this right.
After this meeting, you're gonna write up like a formal thing, that you'll send us that we can review.
Yeah.
Kind of get last comments and then we'll.
Yeah, and then we can bring it to planning commission as a formal action item and you can recommend it to the council.
All right, so go ahead, what?
I was just gonna clarify, so if it's behind the home, the color of the shipping container doesn't matter. Half acre or less, it does matter no matter what. And if it's larger than half an acre, if it's behind the home, we don't care about the color. If it's within ten to fifteen, well, ten or fifteen, yeah, let's pick a number.
Say ten.
If it's within the first ten feet of the home, so between thirty and forty, setback from the front property line, it would have to be consistent with the pink color.
Between the thirty and forty.
Oh, you're right, okay. So ten feet from the beginning of the home, I'm trying to think of how we can word this, we can figure it out.
What's the accessory? Is there language in accessory dwelling structure that we can hijack that is similar in, in terms of? Can we just copy and paste?
In terms of setback?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, those setbacks are defined by the front property line. So I think the issue that we're running into is, yes, there's a thirty-foot front setback on there for accessory structures, but it doesn't take under account the fact that for larger lots, people can build their home fifty feet from the property line and have their accessory structure thirty feet from the property line.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, you're gonna keep it behind, but.
Yeah, it's gotta be, if the house is eighty foot back, they can go another ten or farther, they can't pull it forward. And if it's within the envelope of the house, from that ten back, and it's painted the color of the house.
So the closest that it can get to the front is ten feet away from the front of the house?
Correct.
Is that correct? Or was it, yes?
Yeah.
Here, wait, now I'm confused, so if it's.
The front of the house is here, the closest it can get is ten feet from the front of the house. And if it's within the envelope of the house, it needs to be painted the color of the house. If they push it past that corner, it can stay that color.
One question, what happens if, say they have a really wide, super wide lot? Say they got a house, they have accessory structure, it's ten feet back from the front of the house, but it's like half an acre to the side of the house. Do you still want it painted the same color?
Oh, that's a good one.
I mean, like if it's totally detached?
Yeah, it's like house, and it's just way over here.
Sure.
A hundred feet away from the house, but in line with it.
Do you want it still, have it be painted the same color? Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify, whether it was a proximity to house thing or a proximity to the front thing.
I thought we had a discussion about lot size and how if it was beyond a certain size, we don't care about.
Well, yeah, he was just bringing up the point, if it's a long lot and here's the road.
And it's less than a lot size.
And it's compliant with that, but it's completely visual, you know, invisible and maybe right next to the neighborhood.
I think it's more important that it gets painted, if it's way over here and within ten feet of the front, it needs to be painted, but if it's pushed back, I don't think it matters.
Yeah, that just helps, helps understand how to write the code.
Yeah. Like ask as many questions. I'm trying to think what else, oops.
Like, go back to that one, yeah, like that's, you don't want that.
This one?
Yeah, forward to the house, because it's all.
I know, I'm like, this is the. Yeah, this, this is my least favorite one.
Did you see there, I think you mentioned, like, that cannot be buried, that was my recommendation.
I see this one every day because it's just right on Almond Island.
One was said to me, it cannot be placed in a, so. Oh, it can be buried, landscaping outside.
Well, I mean, I drive by there every day and that, that one stayed there for almost a year. I'm just. Yeah.
Okay, do we, do we have to make a motion, it's just a?
No, it's just a discussion item, yeah. Is there anything else before we?
Solidify it.
So just to clarify, it's no, sorry, you go.
I was just saying, as an exception to the, the code, these shipping containers need to be, do not need to comply with material, but just the color of the shipping container.
Yes, yes. And just to clarify, there's no permitting process outside of when they need a building permit. So if there's plumbing, electrical going in, if they're somehow attaching, attaching it to a permanent foundation, we would have them go through the building permit process, okay?
And out of curiosity, how do citizens find out about this new code?
They call, or it's based on complaint, or.
It's based on complaint, it's not something that could be included in our newsletter? That goes out with utilities?
Yeah, we can do that.
I'd like to propose that we do that.
Okay.
Because I think no one wants to be tattled on, they just didn't know, and there was no code before.
I think that's a great idea.
Then we can avoid complaints hopefully.
So long-term container, if I don't run plumbing, electrical, we're saying we are not going to follow all this guidelines in terms of.
You have to get a bill of accommodation.
Right, and, and that's what Kelly I think is, is asking, so if I just use it for storage and I don't ask any permit, it gets, I, it's a temporary, okay?
But if it doesn't, if it doesn't need a building permit, but it's longer than sixty days, that's the thing, there's no permitting process, it's just still subject to these rules, which most of our code is that way, if we're being honest, there are a lot of things that we don't require permits for, but our laws in our code, and that's where code compliance kind of comes in, it's like you can't have a tree there. But, yeah. I know that happened today.
So now that you have a, any law enforcement or code enforcement?
He likes to go by code compliance, he thinks it's a little nicer, which is true, I'm like, we're just trying to help people comply with their code.
Do you also, does he also, or does the city now have stats around level or complaints, I guess, or that he is receiving, the way you know what type of code you wanted to adjust or modify or clarify? You know what I'm saying, like, does he start collecting now, now that he started receiving feedback from residents? Is he collecting also that data, and feed it back to you, which then feed it back to the council to say, I think this is the gaps you're starting to see in the code based on the compliance?
That's, that's the goal, we actually do have like an Excel sheet that's kind of like a code enforcement report where we have them all categorized and have how many complaints of different topics we receive and do our best to keep track of that. Um, but obviously, majority of these things are things that are enforced in the code and have been pretty recently passed and addressed, and so we're just trying to keep with it, a lot of it is nuisances, that's, that's a big thing, but.
Okay, you got everything you need?
Yes, I am good, hey, thanks y'all.
All right, now we're gonna go to item number five, do we wanna talk about the training? Has everybody had a chance to watch that? I thought it was pretty good, actually.
Great acting.
Very funny.
Meg Ryan. So we talked earlier in the meeting, but I'll just bring it up again now. When I was at a city council meeting, the message got to council that the planning commission does not want public input. That was the message that was received from the last meeting that you guys had. And I know that's not what you guys meant or what the message was. I think what our feeling is, is there needs to be more communication at the beginning of the process, not at the administrative process.
We can do something about it.
Yeah, well, we can do something about it, so way more at the beginning, but not at the administrative, because we've talked before about how the administrative is frustrating because people are frustrated. Unless I watched the training wrong, the attorney in the training thing said, don't have public comment when it's administrative. Because it could put us in a lawsuit. If it sways the decision.
Yeah, and Rob begged to differ a little bit.
So Rob, what did you get out of that?
But a teeny, but teeny.
Because the guy said, the guy said, please, don't do that.
Yeah, the guy is Brent Bateman, former property rights ombudsman. He typically works, he's the guy that a lot of developers and property owners would contact, he would work at a state office when the city did something that impacted their property rights. So he was often going to cities and saying, hey, what are you doing? And trying to explain, and cities have to justify it. His point is well-taken, that there is a, it's called the public clamor doctrine in Utah where wherever it's administrative matter, the fact that people don't like it doesn't matter all that much. However, there is a use for public comment, limited, and I mean this very limited. And this is where, we've come up with this issue where, you know, we've had very controversial plats come through or approvals come through, people want to comment and they say, well then why are we having a public hearing planning commission if they're not gonna listen to us? And you say, well, it's because our attorney says we have to approve this because it meets code. And that's true. There are times that public comment can come up and say, it doesn't meet code for the following reasons, your own code says this. And that's the kind of thing where it is useful. For example, kind of, we have, we had an item that was polled today where the neighbor said, submitted a letter which is public comment. where the neighbor said, submitted a letter, which is public comment, but it pointed to things in our code that could justify a potential denial, issues with an administrative plat approval.
So could we open it for public comment on code only?
If you could explain that to the public, sure.
Well, we do, every time, every time it comes up, we say, sorry, we're gonna approve this regard, and we just, I just think it's bad.
It, it's just hard to have a public hearing and say, this is useful, this is not, to people who don't know land use. I mean, land use is complex enough, and you all experience it, and you're, you're trained in it, and it's still not the most intuitive thing. So I think that's where the, the kind of tension comes up.
Well, here's, here's what somebody told me, when I told him about this. And I agreed, like, made me come down off my position. And she said, if you do the front part better, you won't get comments. And he goes, and if you get rid of the comments, you don't know if you did the front part better. So she was saying, if you move forward with more notification on a website, do whatever we can at the beginning, you can use the public comment on the administrative as a thermometer, as if what you're doing at the beginning is right. So if we have one of those and nobody stands up, that means everybody got notified. And so I thought, you know, initially, maybe we started off like that. But I do think we should move forward with looking at our process of notification at the beginning, public participation. Because that's kind of what the planning commission, I think, is. We get it at the rawest part, where everybody's upset, they're hearing it about, you know. So they're all coming here with their pitchforks and, and whatever. We're able to sort through it, get it down before it goes to council now. It's still, they still take their pitchforks, but they're not waving them, they're just showing up with them. And so I think, if we can get that process better filtered upfront, it's better for council. And then by the time it makes the administrative list, we don't get people coming up saying, I never heard about this. Unless they just move there. Then it's like, well, welcome to Iowa, and this is how we do things, you know? We don't-
And right now, if we wanna make a recommendation, we have to put a, put a motion, basically Nathan said, put to, put the agenda for next.
Future.
Is that correct? Because he had some input about conditional use too, right?
Yeah, I just heard a, a bunch of things, like, while I was watching the training, I thought, oh, that's interesting. And was just scribbling down stuff, and we may choose, you know, based on what you folks think, I might have some, be in my bonnet about something that nobody else cares about.
Well, one of the thing that I liked, so since I've been running, I've been attending the city council meetings. And you do see how things aren't, like, I talked to Kirk, and I go to the, the retaining wall thing get passed? He said, oh yeah, we passed up. We didn't, we don't get the feedback unless, unless we go watch the meeting. And what I liked in that meeting is somebody from, and it doesn't have to be the chairman, but somebody from the planning commission attends the city council meeting. Like, they have the police and the sheriff. They could have a city council when an item comes up. If you guys see that, oh, that's not how, we weren't saying no more public comment. We were saying, this was a code change, a law change that they said was coming through. Then you can come up and say, no, and it kind of, because they get our notes, but it's better if somebody's there. So another recommendation for me to council is, somebody from the planning commission should attend the council meetings. But they did say, nobody from the council should attend the planning commission meeting. So I thought that was interesting, that you don't let the council come here, but having one of us-
So even amongst us, if we come up with some kind of schedule, a rotating schedule, something like that, if someone, if you're assigned that month, then, and something comes up, it's your job to recruit someone else, and we cover for each other, and I think that would be great.
That'd be great to rotate that.
The, the, I don't know, the other thing that came in my mind when I was watching the, the last, I think, was the, the last council, the previous, it was about Highland Business Park. And we voted in favor of-
All the architecture.
Right, the architecture, and apparently there was some history behind how the developer, I guess verbally agreed to have some sort of design. We were not aware, right? And I felt like we felt, you know, the city and the vision that the neighbor had in a sense. And I, and I'm wondering, like, what could I have done it better? And what, what, what type of information should I have received? And it goes back probably to Chris's comments about conditional use. Should we, when we have those type of situation, and the council agreed to make some sort of arrangement with the developer for that particular plot, shall we just say, no, that's not conditional? This is, this is, is the look that we want that lot to have? And, and avoid us making, I guess-
Well, that, that one specifically, that, that piece of code applicable to that zone has specific architectural guidelines that are stated in there. And the architecture that they provided met those guidelines. There, obviously, there is a different vision or different assumption that it would look differently, but based on what was in code, that's, it's just-
Oh, I understand, I, the sense that I got from-
A tough situation, I understand, but-
But the sense that I got from the- Well, I did-
I felt very guilty too, when they said that, it made me-
I, I did, because the sense that I got from the city council is that now they were trying to find a really clever way to take that back, and really they couldn't. And there were residents that they felt cheated, because they felt that the, the vision for the business park was different to what we voted. But nobody came to, to planning permission to give us that feedback, and apparently the, the residents, I guess they were out of town.
But honestly, at that point, the planning commission can't do anything about it, right?
Neither, neither can the council, and that's-
But in that case, the council could not do anything, because we voted in favor.
Yeah, but the council can say we wanted to be-
No, so the architecture is a planning commission approval. And so that's where they ran into, oh no, because the planning commission approved it, and they were-
What kind of broader picture, and this is in that sort of email spam that I was thinking about. We're a planning commission, our job, and it was, I know this is embarrassing for me, but while I was watching, and I thought, oh, you know, our job is to plan. Hmm, I don't know. No, but, but as in, like, a visionary, like a business strategy planning, strategic planning thing. And I thought, actually, to confess to myself, I think I'd be more reactive. Not out of, maybe it's been laziness, but I didn't quite think that, and it hurts.
I think a lot of the councils knew at the same time, too. So we didn't have a lot of the age to pass on, unless, you know, we all came, there was a bunch of new people at the same time. So that kind of was a-
Including me.
Yeah, it was over there.
But, but that's something, if we decided, you know, some cities say, no, everything in the city is gonna look like an old Wild West look and feel. And, yeah, something like that. Or Newport in Rhode Island, where they have incredibly strict zoning, and it doesn't matter if you're Walmart, you have to fit into their structure. And we don't have that. And if we choose to do that, we can, but that's where we would come up with a recommendation and say, we want everything in the city to look blue, or pink, or orange, or whatever. And that would be put into the, yeah, but then we would propose something to the city council about look and feel, and aesthetics, and architectural editing. And then collaboratively, the city council would look at it and go, no, it's a silly idea, don't do that. Or yes, it's a great idea.
So you had five bullets in your email. Which of these five would you like, or would you recommend to add to next agenda? Because I guess we, based on what Nate said, we have to put a motion, is that right?
I think you can just do a general topic, and then we, we can discuss those bullets in a general topic. We don't have to list every single one. Uh, you wanted to, for example, you, uh, help me with your, help me if I'm, if I don't summarize your email right. Uh, basically, your role related to X, Y, Z. And then, then we can talk about that, right?
Yeah. So you had the overall city look, feel, removal conditional use permit, grading retaining ball, uh, legal boundary offset versus reality in zero escaping, water, water, water wise landscaping. Those were the five.
We can list those, we want to discuss these following topics, and if we do that, we can just list them, and it's fine.
Yeah, and that was really more just to stimulate thought, because if everybody goes, no, we don't care about the zero escaping, then I'm not gonna go.
No, I think zero escaping is important, especially with our water. I mean, a lot of cities, if you go anywhere down in the Arizona region, it's all hardscapes. They don't want lawns in the front, lawns in the back, even then they want restricted lawns. But with all these new developments coming up, the more we require those builders, as their standard landscapes to put in, you know, hardscapes. Because hardscapes look great.
And part of the problem that we've had come up in, um, the planning commission before is the problem with all these landscaped medians in the roads actually being a visual barrier for safety issues. So, and that's something that we're watering and paying for. Another thing they've talked about is the most, or the most strip the front, am I forgetting something? What's it called? The most strip? Whatever's between, part strip, yeah. Whatever's between the sidewalk and the street. The water percentage that goes down. I know, I've heard some stats about Salt Lake City, can't remember them, but they were saving by eliminating most strip areas, unless it was tree or shrub, and it was a direct water, you know, like a drip system to that. So they were just trying to conserve water in those ways.
Well, and the more hardscape we do in the city, on the city land, the less we have to maintain it, mow it, water it. You know, you're just doing plants, it's, it's just-
We value the trees and the shade.
Trees are great, but we don't need grass everywhere.
Yeah. Have a motion, or do we have a, just as a general agenda?
Well, I, I just wanted to chat about this, and just to clarify, what I mean about the setback is, and I'll use a specific home as an example. If you drive past the red church, the Strasburg building on six thousand west, immediately south of it, there's a rather palatial home. And the, the garage, I went and measured it. It's seventy-two inches high, the cement floor of the garage. And it's, oh, probably six inches away from the wall that is the boundary. But then when I looked at the plat map, and after Rob and Kelly educated me, I realized, oh, but the, the actual property boundary goes into the street. And so according to our code, they actually are within the appropriate setback, because it's from the property boundary. But from a practical point of view, it's mushed right up against the wall.
Wait a second. I thought setbacks go from, if there's a right of way that includes the parkway, the sidewalk, the curb in the street, the setback starts at the edge of the-
That's the intent.
And then the setback goes, you don't take it from the center of the street here. In that case, you have a couple of different things going on. You have where that setback is, and then you have the requirement of where the fence goes. Okay, so that, that fence has to be set back a certain ways away. And so it makes it look closer and not meeting a setback than it really is. Okay?
So the setback goes like into the sidewalk, I think it's like in the middle of the side, or the property line, I apologize. It's like in the middle of the sidewalk, and their fence line is like, I think it's like four feet in from the sidewalk, and then-
Yeah, because the, because the, what's the setback on the fence from the curb?
It's fourteen.
Fourteen, so the fence is actually at the right location?
Correct.
Right? So that puts it closer to the, to the building than it would be nor, in, you know, a normal, like, in neighborhood, middle of neighborhood. So it looks like it doesn't meet it. And you combine that with where the location of the property line is, which is near the edge of sidewalk, or in the sidewalk. And then you, you give that catch twenty-two. So, um, we actually, on that one, we actually had a, a registered surveyor actually survey it to confirm that it met the ten-foot setback.
Because our building inspector was like, there is no way that this is going right here, but-
Yeah, and so I, I brought that up more just as a topic for discussion, that as a planning commission, do we want that? At least to Chris Howden, I think aesthetically, the spirit of the law is the building shouldn't be mushed up against the fence. That's the layman's interpretation.
So that's accessory building, side yard, seven inches.
Is there a way that we should suggest to the city council, change the code so that we have buildings that aren't-
But this sounds like it's in an open space community, right?
No, 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 no.
This isn't an R one forty?
This is R one forty.
Riviera Estates.
And, and then- Yeah, it's, you should drive by there, it's quite enlightening. The neighbors are less than amused.
You have a conflict between two different things. You, you know, setback is that, hey, don't ever rely on, it's a good graphic representation of, with the Utah County parcel map. Uh, that's why we surveyed it. But, eh, you know, having said that, it, you know, when you, when you push that fence back on the other side of a property line, you're gonna, it's gonna appear that nothing meets setbacks, just because- So how do we avoid that, so that it looks right?
You'd rather change the code, in my opinion.
Just hope the property owner thinks it doesn't look right.
I mean, in reality, they, that developer that put that fence in is one of the few that actually did it right. And so you have that situation. Most people would just put it closer to the sidewalk.
My thought is, the problem with, with code in general, um, is we write code to address situations, and it becomes a problem, sometimes, there's always a tendency to want to regulate for the exception. And then you get weird code that has a long list of specific rules and exceptions that you have to, you know, parse down. You know, this all applies unless, and except when, provided that. And it, it's, it's hard to do, I mean, most of the time, you have to live with the fact that we're gonna have general rules. And there's absolutely times we need to fix those general rules. They're not, you know, doing what we want them to do. There's always gonna be weird things that happen, and so we can't always fix all of them. But I think, I was gonna say this with the public clamor thing, it's great not for that one application sometimes. But sometimes it does inform as to what the rules should be going forward. And that's where the code change, like, oh, people don't like this, this is enough of an issue. Is this, sometimes it's, it's just its own thing, and you know, people don't like the fact that open space is now being developed, what they thought was open space, which was just someone's field that they owned for, you know, a hundred years. Sometimes that's an issue. Sometimes though, it's because we didn't anticipate this kind of thing. Is there a good rule we can come up with to address it? It's like shipping containers, that just wasn't a thing before, and now it is.
So this, we could adjust this code, now that we've seen it doesn't work in that situation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was talking with the code compliance official. And we had a, a house where their, their property line extends into the street, because it's an old property. So there was never a, a plat where they dedicated the right of way to the city. The question is, well, where is their property line? Where do we determine sightlines? Because our code says by the property line, which is halfway into a street.
It's on the other side of the street.
Or on the other side of the street, in some cases.
So all, all rivers like that, my property line, the road, more than half the road is on my property. But the setbacks in our CCNRs are from the right of way, not the property line. Which-
They all have right of lines.
Well, there is a dedicated easement. Access easement that goes through, that allows me to put snow where I want it, and they can't put rocks in that area, because they'll do that to hit our plows. So we can move those rocks without asking them, because we have that access. But we make it from the access back, not, otherwise my house could be literally right up on that.
And frankly, that might be one, that might be a somewhat easy fix, where we change it to, say, property line to curb, for those places that have curb, or where they don't, to the edge of an improved street, the asphalt. Because some places don't have curb sidewalk gutter, because they're old, but someplace, they're always gonna have a road somewhere.
But there's always a, what, was it a, uh, access easement, that the road has to fit within, right?
Sometimes there's not an easement. Sometimes it's not clear where the road came from, and it's, the fact it's been there for over ten years means it's a public road now.
So road or curb?
So, and say the planning commission meets out there and picks where it goes?
You just all sit there on the side, play darts at each other. You play bocce ball.
The, the other thing, and we don't need to boil the ocean, but the other topic, and it may have seemed a little esoteric the way that I described it, on that same property, I noticed, because of the height issue, where we've got a wall, but the height is based on the cul-de-sac that the home is built in, the front of the house. But the back of the house is probably five feet or so lower. And so they've put the appropriate fence there. And then the garage is matching the grade of the front of the home. And so the floor of the garage is here, and it is two inches or so below or above, I can't remember, I measured it. And then they built the home, the garage on top of that. So from the front of the property, it looks pretty.
Six thousand, go down, six thousand, you would see.
It looks great, but when you're on six thousand west, you look at it and go, why are they building a, like, a hundred-foot hotel thing here? But actually, it's, the measurements are all completely correct, it's just the grade. So that, that stimulated thought, it's-
Is this a new house?
This is all Kelly's fault, because she made us- This is all Kelly's fault because she made us do the training, which we're grateful for.
Do we need to, so we formally make a motion to discuss? And then is there, just before we, I don't know if we need a motion request, but would we like to come up with some kind of schedule to attend, um, council meetings and rotating schedule or sign up?
Do we make a motion to recommend that to council that somebody from the planning?
I will be there on.
You can do that on your own. I'm like.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Do you know what?
Just call Rod and say, hey, you need to put us over there.
Well, I mean, I mean, the planning commissioners have the right to attend a city council meeting. That's what I meant.
No, in a formal basis where they can be.
Oh, you want us to have their?
Just like you have the police chief, the fire guy there.
What do you think? And like if a planning commissioner just came to city council, they're asking if they can sit there with their nameplate.
If, if council wants it. We're just saying, do we make a motion to recommend that to council?
If they can.
Yeah, we can bring that up. Or Jerry, I think that'd be appropriate for you to, as the chairman, to bring that up.
Or just go directly to them.
Mayor, yeah.
Okay.
Now, let me, let me clarify one thing so you understand. One, I, I've worked in a number of jurisdictions and they used to have a council member as a sitting planning commissioner.
Like ex officium.
Or even in the audience. And what would happen is.
The, the training told us, don't do.
Yeah, don't do that, right? So what, what would happen is, is that the commissioners would default, always default to that council member, right? Especially when you had a code amendment, it was controversial or not, it didn't matter. And so you, you weren't provide, the planning commission wasn't providing unbiased opinions. Uh, and they weren't providing good feedback. And so that's why the council isn't encouraged to attend these meetings. Or if they are, not to get up in the middle and say, well, I think we shouldn't rezone this, right? Uh, because obviously, you know, what you do is going to be affected by that.
Right.
As anybody would. That's the background behind it. It's not that, it's not that they can't be here or anything like that. It's more of a desire for you guys to serve your role as representatives of the community and to get your feedback.
So our recommendation is that one of us be at the city council meeting.
No, I'm right, I understand that.
It's just, just if they call on us. Like, hey, this doesn't make sense to me. Not us getting up and making a report.
No, I agree. And, and we, and we can even do, uh, you know, you know, uh, by, you know, quarterly or something, a chairman report or something if we wanted to, but.
Well, I just noticed, I just noticed that in the one meeting that I attended, two of the, two of the councilmen were like, why does the planning commission not want public input? I wasn't at that meeting, but I knew that they weren't saying they didn't want public input. I, I knew what it was coming to, so it would have been good to have somebody come out and say, no, that's, that's not what we were saying. But the law changed, that's why they did it. We want more input at the beginning and not at this stage.
No.
And you guys need to watch your training.
I was just trying to explain why you don't see council members here.
Yeah, well, I don't think we want, you're right. I agree with that, a hundred, a hundred percent.
And as Jerry was saying, if we do better at the front end and we're educating and the community sees planning commission following up and clarifying with council during council meeting if they're in attendance, and they see that we are actually functioning and communicating with each other, it's not, well, that planning commission did this. Or we're not saying, how come they disregarded everything we said? You know, are we even useful? You know, I think it bridges that gap.
Well, the other thing I like is we don't all attend the council meetings. So we don't know what, what we moved on, happened. Like I found out from Kurt, just from talking to him, that the retaining wall thing was done. But if we're attending that meeting, when we come back to our meeting, let's say Audrey is the one that went, she can say, hey, they liked our, uh, pod thing, you know, the thing that we're doing. Or they liked our retaining walls or whatever. Or they didn't like it and this is why. Yeah, you can, you could, those members can come back and report to this committee how that went.
Yeah, we are, we are going to schedule a joint meeting. Everybody, uh, it's just timing at this point. When's the best time to do that? Is it now or after the first of the year when you have new elected officials?
Yeah, I really, I mean, I've been on this for three and a half years and we've done one. And it was really good. We talked about the affordable housing and that kind of stuff. It's just, it's better if we know where the council's coming from so that we plan the stuff that's going to get approved. Cause I've been in the cities where nothing the planning commission does gets approved by the, they just, yeah, whatever.
Now, I, I will say that you, you do have a couple of council members that are really diligent about either, especially when we've gone, one of the advantages of, very small advantage of pandemic is broadcasting with Zoom and stuff and they pay attention. And they're diligent about watching and participating. And we encourage that. But, uh, um, yeah, that obviously hasn't helped getting together and that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, if you're not, okay, we'll discuss that. I just, I, I would love to discuss about the conditional use of appropriate, uh, person.
Just include all five of those items or?
And you can't watch council anytime. It, you know, if you have insomnia, like I do. No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding, you know, we, we gotta make it a little light in here, right?
Usually once, two minutes run down.
So anyways, um, but no, they do, and you can watch it post-meeting after. I know, uh, remember Brian Braithwaite, he's only council, he still likes to be involved. And he'll, he says, when he's writing the training, he'll, uh, listen to it at like one point two five or one and a half times to speak.
Oh.
So.
I like that.
So that's an idea too.
Okay.
That's how I listen to my.
On my.
Okay.
So next, funny, next, next planning commission meeting, we want to discuss about, um, legal boundary, it sounds like, offset versus reality. It sounds like that was something that we wanted to discuss and then, um, conditional user permit, anything else? I mean, I don't know what, what we have in the agenda next month, so I don't know if you want to fill it out.
We don't know either.
What's that?
So we don't know either.
Okay. So do you want to put it, do we want to discuss those few topics?
Well, if I understood correctly, if, if you guys are, if we have time, I'd like to discuss that. I, I'm really.
Let's make the time. Yeah.
And the same thing with the look and the feel of the city. I really think that that's something that we should, as a planning commission, make a proposal to the city council. And we would really want this, even if it means something incredibly unpopular like higher taxes or, or just to say, okay, well, we don't want that and therefore we are going to look like a dog's breakfast. But everybody's happy with that because we don't want to pay the extra taxes.
Just really quickly, that's something that y'all will over the next year or two, however long it takes, be able to address because with fiscal year 2020, a budget, uh, part of the budget was approved for a general plan update. We are well over, I mean, the last full general plan update we had was in two thousand eight. And so this is really going to be a, an extensive process, um, with studies and surveys and plenty of meetings with the public to try to figure out what we want in our general plan, our goals and policies that we should implement.
Now, this is just an update, right? Cause we're almost built out here.
Yes, it's a, it's like an entire general plan update. Where do you want to go into it?
I was just going to say, in, in some regard, it's really important to have an update as Highland is getting built out. Because a lot of our updates were, here's the zoning we want to see, here's where we want to see commercial. Going forward, it's Highland is mostly developed. What new plans, what new goals does the city have? I mean, the planning commission has two jobs by state statute. One is to review land use regulations, all the code things we do. The other one is the general plan. Those are your two state law mandated, mandated rules as to recommend a general plan and recommend land use stuff.
So we could discuss annexation.
That is, that is typically part of a general plan annexation. Redevelopment, zoning, transportation, public transportation. Modern income housing is one that always gets pushed with, uh, and it's becoming, at some point, Silas Schaefer is going to do more than just recommend it. So that's always part of it and any other element, that's all part of the general plan update. And it informs, part of the problem I think we've had is our general plan is two thousand eight. So it's harder to inform what we want to do now because it didn't address a lot of things we're doing.
So when does that start?
Good question.
Good question. When does it start, Kelly?
I'd like to suggest, I'd like to suggest it starts.
When is the, when is the money approved for it? I guess, put it that way. Is that the first of the year?
That's now, it's already started. Yeah.
It's in our budget right now?
It's in the current fiscal year budget.
So is it not started because everybody's busy? Is that?
Yeah, it's a workload issue.
It's a big, yeah.
That's what I was trying to add to. We'll do it, just turn it over to us. Well, how much money do we have to work with? Give us a budget, we'll get it done. We'll knock it out. All right.
Well, it sounds like the money's already been approved. It's in your. Yeah.
Right now, we're just kind of trying to put together a few maps to kind of help us gauge where we're at right now when it comes to build out.
They just told us how important it is.
Very preliminary. It is important.
We'll see.
Okay. So did we need to make a motion to discuss those things? I think, no? Okay.
And then I will, I will talk to the mayor about one of us attending the schedule if that's beneficial to them.
We can play a month when you're responsible or if you can't show up, you ask and cover.
Yeah, you cover.
Or you watch it for the main post meeting.
But you also have to make sure you were at the planning meetings that is being, like, if you didn't go to the planning meeting, you probably shouldn't have been at the.
So what, what we can do, if you want, uh, some type of accountability is, as part of the agenda, have a report back. If you were assigned, like you're assigned April, you know, the May meeting, you're reporting on attending that.
So like at planning commission, you talk about what happened at council?
And then each planning commission will also verify who is doing it.
Cause remember, there's two council meetings for every one planning commission meeting or three, depending on how you count.
I've been to one every week.
So that person would be then they can, they can watch it if they're not attending, because the manager can't have feedback during the meeting.
Right.
So the person who's helping the best. Is that person supposed to go there?
There's two in a month typically. And they usually go until midnight. But I also told Kurt when I was talking to him about it. I said, but have us go first. Like if we're in the meeting, if you have any questions about what's going on that involve the planning commission, let's vet that at the beginning so we don't have to sit through the whole thing, right? So he thought that was a good idea too, so. Yeah, he knows that. He knows that. All right, so let's see, are we, anything else? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting today.
Have a second?
Please second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
So our next meeting is what?
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth.